At 6:00 PM on June 18, 2024, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Bergus.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Here.
Teague.
Here. All right, well, welcome everyone to your City Hall. And if you're joining us virtually, welcome as well. We're going to jump right into this. We have Proclamations 2A is going to be Parks and Recreation Month. And this is going to be read by Counselor Megan Alter.
What's her name? Whereas, Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Iowa City. And whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. And whereas, Parks and Recreation encourages physical app—excuse me—physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas, Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through job training, increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide us place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, Iowa City recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Megan Alter, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of July to be Parks and Recreation Month.
And to receive this is Julie Seidel Johnson.
Julie Seidel Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation, so Mayor and Council, just thank you for your support. As Parks and Recreation Director, I think of how varied my job is every day, and you just heard the list of all the different things that are happening. Summer is such a busy season here. We support the big events that are happening. Job training, if you saw all the young people that came through our rec center and training for the new jobs for the summer, it is a fun time for us. And that with all the parks and the renovations and City Park, Pool, and the Skate Park coming up, it's just a really exciting time to be here and be a part of Parks and Rec. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. 2B is Waste and Recycling Workers Week, and this will be read by Counselor Mo.
Whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the eradication of many diseases in the Western world is due in large part to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal. And whereas, the proper collection and disposal of waste, recycling and organic waste are integral to preventing litter and dump heaps. And whereas, the City of Iowa City values and celebrates dozens of workers in the public and private trash, recycling and yard waste and organics industry in our community. And whereas, the City of Iowa City promotes environmental sustainability through reducing waste and increasing recycling and compost. Now, I therefore, Josh Mo, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim the week of June 16 to June 22 as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. Receiving the reward, on behalf of the city is Jen Jordan.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Julie said it really well, and they probably seem like they have a lot more fun in parks, but we have a lot of fun in refuse and solid waste management, too. So, our division's resource management does represent 35 public employees, and there are probably about that many more in the private sector in Johnson County. We pick up all the trash recycling organics from across the county and deal with most of that material at the Iowa City landfill. So, as some of you know, we're always happy to give tours. If you're interested, reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not exactly sure if the mic is on here. If staff can check that, please. Okay. All right. Great. We're going to move on to Proclamation 2C. This is Juneteenth, National Freedom Day. Whereas, Juneteenth National Freedom Day commemorates June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Gaveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that Emancipation Proclamation declared all slaves to be free. And whereas, in 1866, Juneteenth commemorations began to be celebrated, consisting of prayer services, inspirational speeches, readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, food, games, and dances. And whereas, Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates the strength and resolve of African Americans throughout history and is an opportunity to honor African American culture, art, history, and achievement as all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experiences of others. And whereas, the first major Juneteenth celebration in Johnson County was hosted by Club KZ, a group of 2007 who name means to work in Swahili, and was held on June 26, 2011, at Mercer Park. And whereas, beginning in 2020, the City of Iowa City officially recognized Juneteenth as a city holiday. And whereas, community organizations for profits, not-for-profits, and local governments have come together to host a series of events and celebrations from June 14 through June 19. Visit icjuneteenth.com for more details. All events are free and open to the public. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, do hereby proclaim that June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth, National Freedom Day, in Iowa City, and encourage community members to participate in the commemorative events. And we have quite a few people here to receive this, so we thank everybody for coming. I'm going to ask that Mayor Pro Tim just read off the individuals that are come to receive this, and then I'll call up the individuals that will speak and the order that they'll speak.
Okay. First, I would like to mention all the organizations that have represented people here on the room. So, African Community Network, Bilag Voices Project, NAACP, Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County, Iowa City Human Rights Commission, Black Professional of Iowa, TRC, and MDC, the multicultural. So, we have the people here. They're going to accept. Do you want me to call them?
Yes. So, the individuals that are going to be speaking in this order will be—
Of course, Mamet Hik. The first one. Yeah.
Yes. And actually, it'll be followed by—we'll just go ahead and name them in the order.
Yeah. It will be followed by Ann Kitchi, An-Nursad, Roger Lusala, and Mr. Townsend.
And I'll just kind of lay these all there when you come up. So, let's give them all a round of applause.
Okay. I'm going to try to be quick. So, number one, I was born, and we were born in Mississippi. And this all taken place in 1954 and '55. I have here a deed and stuff, you know, my father and them deed where we had—I look at it every year, one time. And this is the deed we had to our house. We had house, we had just got a new house with a bathroom made in, but we hadn't got the bathroom, you know, we were moving on up, right? So, so, but make a long story short, my dad was a minister. And he was—he and three more men was trying to get the people to vote, you know what I'm saying? So, they would go to a hiding place, you know, talking. So, they killed Reverend Lee, and then they—the other guy, he was—they shot him, but he didn't die. They pretended he was dead and took him to Memphis. So, my daddy was left, right? My dad had 11 girls, no boys. So, prior to this time, so one of the Ku Klux Klan's men came to my house in the day. He said, Reverend, don't go to your church tonight. He said, they gonna kill you. And he said, I don't know what I'm saying. He said, because if they find me here, they gonna kill me. He said, but I don't know why I'm done. You all know there was nothing but God. But anyway, so the man—we had one store. Paul McDonald was the storekeeper, and he lived—his farm was right next to ours. We were real good friends. My daddy—you know how you take up stuff all the year at the store, and you pay it when you get your crop done, right? So, my daddy have a lot of money. So, the man said, please, they gonna kill you, because they already had killed Reverend Lee now. So, my dad said, I can't leave my family. We just got our new house, you know, I can't do this. And so, my mom, she said, Jane, they don't want us. You gotta go. They already killed Reverend Lee, you know. So, my mom said, uh, it was—he—it was—at home was five. So, Irene, Maxine, and me. And then the two youngest, Paul had enough money to send my dad and the two youngest, you know, get the—hide them out at night and took them to, you know, get away. And everybody said, Reverend Hargrove, you just go. So, my momma said, I do. Momma—you know, women didn't take care of business, men. So, we had farm, we had cow, we had everything. So, we had tractor, my dad used to hire people. And the man said, they not gonna let you live. He said, you too smart of a nigger. You know, you can't do it. So, so, momma said, Jane, just go. They took that. So, that night, when the night came, the—like he said, they came up to the—you know, when you got a lot of cattle and stuff, they come up to the thing at night, right? You know, they'd be scared all night, but they come up to the—you know. So, they came and they turn their lights all on us. The bright lights, you couldn't see. And so, momma told us, she said, she said, y'all get on your knees. It was me, Maxine, and Irene. She said, get on your knees and pray. My momma got a gun, shotgun, and the people had the light. And you know it was God, because my momma ain't never did no stuff like that. But she walked to the porch. And if one white man came up, they had the trucks, you know, with the little thing, say, we—we gonna—you know, I give you this for a cow. Momma said, I ain't say that I was selling nothing, you know. But anyway, make a long story short, so momma said, y'all pray. So, me, Irene, Maxine, we were down on our knees, and we were— Oh, God, I didn't want to cry, I just—we was on our knees. And we said, please, don't let her kill our mom. And the momma said, I won't. She would walk to the porch. She walked to the porch, and she said, I know it was God. She said, anybody walk up this way, I'm gonna kill—you know, she just said. She said, I don't even know why I said it. But anyway, do y'all know, the man who was in charge, he said—he raised his hand up. He said, we were just saying, please, Jesus, don't let them kill our mom. God, come help us, Jesus, don't let them kill our mom. And that man told the car, holy, holy, everybody, get back in your car, get back in your car. He said, this nigger is crazy, let's go, let's go. They all left, y'all. They didn't do nothing else. We haven't seen them no more, no more since, you know what I'm saying? No more since they didn't bother us anymore. We gave our stuff away. So, my daddy got to Chicago, you know, we was all in the newspaper, NAACP helping us. They were breadbasket at that time. So, we had our house, 711, they could pay for and everything. And so, they had paid the taxes. So, they said that, we didn't pay the taxes. We had the receipt, because we would like to pay that like a bunny. We didn't have no checks then. We didn't. So, we had the receipt. Send the breadbasket down there, they gonna pay. But to make a long story short, my daddy said, we didn't wish nobody dying. He said, we can get another house, we can get other land. I don't want nobody that's going out there getting killed. And he said, he said, this, this, our land, this house, they told us where they were moving it to. We still, right now, we go to, everybody, because they know that was Reverend Hargrove house. But anyway, look. Man, I didn't want to cry. But anyway, I want to—I want to tell you this. And my daddy sit down, when we got to Chicago, everybody, we was all on TV and everywhere. And then they said, the man ran out, you know, Mississippi with the little kids and blah, 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 blah. But look, my—we they came to a meeting, we had so many people, we had no place to stay. So, this one minister, he stood up, he said, you got a place to stay. I got it. And it's right two or three doors from where Obama stay now, in one of the best neighborhoods in Chicago. He gave us this apartment, we didn't have to pay nothing for—you know what I'm saying? For the—oh, for a long—he had a big night, it was so nice, you know, because we weren't used to carpet and all this stuff. It was so nice. And so, we—I said, but listen to me. One thing my dad went, because he sit down to talk around the table, I want y'all to know that. He said, out of all of this, out of all of this, I don't want you to hate white people. He said, because that is not of God. He said, God love us all. He said, I don't want you all to grow up. This is a hard thing, he said, but you'll get back. You living, you can make. And I want to tell you all, we never suffer anymore. We always had—we used to sneak with white kids, you know, they used to sneak, they play with us. We always had white friends, and no different, no from—you know, we didn't have no division. We love white people, and we are—and our—the little kids used to—at the store, they —we used to hide, they had to hide from their momma to play with us. But I want to tell you this, we have love today, and we—we came out 100%. We got everything, more, way more than, you know, what we ever had. So, I want to let you know this, that we—I—I put this song in my heart. It says this. Though trials come on every hand, but let me tell you this. I feel like God, I'm going on. I want you to know, I don't care what come your way, we have to love, like Jesus said. And this what I had today. He did this, but I have no—I'm so happy today. I have a home, all of us must got home, and I tell you. And look for God done, for my—I been to sell them, sell them on the bridge, and we there, look, got my son, little black, little black. Do you see that little black boy? Do y'all see that?
Yes.
So, show me what God can do. All of this, and my son in a white town is the man. I tell you, I feel, I feel like going on.
Leave it to my mother. I was supposed to tell her to talk to the council, but you can't do that to your mother.
You cannot say that to your mother, so, okay. Annie, Aunt Kitchi, please.
Welcome.
I don't think I can top that. Oh, so, I'm just going to say a few words. My name is Ann Kitchi, I'm from African Community Network. The purpose of our organization is to bring people together, bring the Africans together, and make a difference in the environment in which we live. I hope we can all work together to bring unity in our community. Thank you.
And please take a proclamation.
Noursad.
Hello, all.
Welcome.
My name is Noursad. I'm a team member in the Immigrant Welcome Network of Johnson County. Our work is basically equality, that we try to build equality for our people, for our new immigrants who come in, so—which is, again, Juneteenth happened, and equality. This day is as important as it marks the end of slavery and celebrates freedom and equality for all, our black people and everybody in general. Juneteenth reminds us of the struggles and the victories of all the black community, the African American community. It's a day to honor the past and look forward to our future. I'm grateful to accept this proclamation for my team and the Immigrant Welcome Network. And let's use this day to learn and celebrate and continue working towards justice and equality for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Human Rights Commission, Roger Lusala, please.
My name is Roger Lusala. I'm representing the Human Rights Commission. And thinking about Juneteenth, if you were downtown Friday night, and you saw how we all just celebrated what we call Freedom Day.
Yes.
So, the amount of people that came out, it topped last year and the year before. And we hope we can just keep moving forward. You know, on Saturday, we celebrated Pride, you know, Faraj just told me the number was 21,000 people. So, that's the goal for Juneteenth.
Yes.
So, we're gonna keep pushing that forward, so we can all get together and celebrate Freedom Day. So, thank you for recognizing Juneteenth, and thank you for all you guys do, to make this city a better place for not only us, not only the immigrant that we coming to live in this town, but for mostly our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Will you take one from Mamet Hik as well?
We have now Orville Townsend, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Juneteenth is, uh, it's unique. Ask ourselves, how can you be free after being enslaved for so long? How can you be free and go for such a period of time and not be aware of it? But I think that goes to tell us, it tells us about the human spirit. It tells us that we can be oppressed, but we have that—that spirit that keeps us going. We don't think about Juneteenth, we don't think about freedom, we think about day to day. Today has its challenges. Can I survive it so that I can begin working on tomorrow? I look around me, I came to Iowa City in 1962 on a football scholarship. I remember that, and I like the fall because the breeze and it's not hot. I used to like to walk. I could walk around this city and almost cover the whole city, and I haven't seen too many people that look like me. And when I did see somebody that looked—that didn't look like me, a lot of time, there was a lot of hostility, that was a safety factor. But, you know, the Lord works in mysterious ways. And I think about the way it was in 1962, and then I look about—I think about where we are today. And the Lord does work in mysterious ways. We have come a long ways, and I think having Juneteenth to celebrate for African Americans, that the city chose to do that, shows us that it's not like it used to be. And that's because of people like you, 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 people like us. I'm glad to be in Iowa City, and I thank you very much for acknowledging Juneteenth and giving it the value that you've given it.
Thank you. And take the proclamation there, please. Thanks to all the speakers that came out, and I just want you all just to stand, they came out for this proclamation, so that we can acknowledge each one of you. And thank you so much. Thank you all. And you can feel free to exit at any point, but you're welcome to stay as well. All right. All right. We're going to move on to our Consent Agenda items, which is Items 3 through 7. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, please?
So moved. Harmson.
Second, Mo.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss any item that is on the Consent Agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Bergus.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We are on to our—onto items that are not on our regular agenda, which is Item Number Eight. This is a time for community comment. The council welcomes anyone to come up and speak to the council. Just know that we cannot respond because we haven't noticed any item that you're talking about. So, we welcome you at this time, and we'll give each individual up to three minutes. And we'll ask that you state your name and city you're from, and there is a sign-in sheet here. Welcome.
Hey, just trying to get unemotional from your mom and those people speaking about things. I'm telling you, man, your mom and mine would have had a good conversation. I grew up in Boston, working class, and my uncle Frank the Tank, we called him, he was the arm wrestling champion in the city. He was arguing about people he couldn't get along with, he was arguing about black people. My parents, my father was in the union, and so was Frank. And one day, and I was nine years old, the apartment was full of smoke, and everybody was arguing, that's what we were. You could probably gather that just from knowing me. And my father said, listen, listen. He said, Frank, look, there are two kinds of people, right? Those with common interests, and then the assholes. He said, not all coloreds are assholes. And that was his way of saying, look, that's not going to get us anywhere. I was nine years old. I heard it. I don't understand it, but I heard it. Anyway, I think of Dr. King on this day, who said that the other—the two sides of the coin, capitalism and racism. And he said that the wellspring of capitalism was imperialism. And Dr. King said that the United States was the most violent country in the world. And he was speaking at a time when we were in Vietnam. And Dr. King was a peace activist, as well as a civil rights activist. He was a brilliant man. And, well, we know what happened to him. He was speaking against the U.S. military industrial complex. And today, Dr. King, I'm sure, would have an opinion. Because when we look around today, we see violent men in our State Department who are arming Syrian rebels against the government, who are arming an apartheid state of Israel against Palestinians, people of color. We were arming Kiev against the eastern Ukrainians and Russians, and arming Taiwan against the mainland, though most of the world considers Taiwan part of China. And I think it's a terrible state of affairs that we are on the brink of a World War III at this moment, because the U.S. State Department tells NATO countries to give weapons to Kiev, and now Kiev can now send weapons into Moscow and to other parts of Russia. We think of Russians here in the United States, or the State Department does, just like they're just not human beings. And that's the same with Palestinians and people in Africa who are starving to death because of global warming. And we need to think differently, and we need to contact our leaders and tell them we need to think differently. I thank this council, and I thank the people who spoke before me, and peace to you.
Thank you. All right. Welcome. Yes. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Asthma Ali. I am from Sudan originally. I immigrated to the United States in 2001 with my family, the small family, my son, my husband. In 2001, we arrived, actually, in North Carolina, Krennysboro, and from there, we moved to— In 2001, we arrived actually in North Carolina, Krennysboro, and from there, we moved to California, San Jose, from California to Waterloo. And in Waterloo, we stayed about three years for my husband at this time to finish his residency at Covenant Hospital. And we've been there in that city. We think we are the only black family in the city. But after residency, we moved to Owain, if you heard about, or you hear about Owain. Owain, that's truly, we were the only black family in the entire city. But the beauty of Iowa, when they meet us at Fairway or somewhere, they will recognize us, they will think that, oh, this is Dr. Delius' family, and so on. Today, I'm so happy to be in Iowa City. We came here since 2006, actually, when I started my first master degree at the University of Iowa. That was in 2010, and we moved on. So I'm here today to thank everyone in the city of Iowa City for every services that they're doing to us as immigrants. And for you to apologize of everything that you studied and we did not participate with you, we did not come, we did not do anything, we just staying home, doing our own things. From that moment, I just remember I have to get out and to do something. Last election, I participated in the pre-election, and then the second election, primary election, and then I am waiting for the upcoming election. That will be the primary, true?
Yes.
Yes. During this time, I worked as Arabic language teacher. Actually, I teach Arabic for about a decade at George Washington High School since 2000, or from 2011 to 2020. During the pandemic, I moved here to Iowa City from Cedar Rapids. And from that time until now, I worked as substitute teacher at the school district. Now, I find this is a chance for me to ask all of you to have a second language to communicate or to use.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I think you got my point.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during this time on any agenda item, on any item that is not on our agenda? Please welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Please state your name and city you're from.
Dave Metzler, Dave Metzler, Iowa City. I'm with Big Ten Taxi Cab Company. Put my name on there.
Yes, please.
Okay, just, it's a little thing, but kind of a big thing. It's about taxi cab paint color. So, you know, 10 years ago or something, there were seven cab companies in town, and it was the main sort of transportation. And each cab company was asked to have a dedicated color. Carse yellow, cab's yellow. Wer the blue color. Marco's cab was green and gold. Pink's cab was obviously pink. Iowa City cab was yellow, or, you know. Anyhow, now we come to a time where there's all Uber and Lyft cars all over the place. There's 200 vehicles. It could be green, white, purple, whatever color you pick, different styles of vehicles. Every year, we have to re-inspect with the city of Iowa City, get the proper permits, do the inspections, pay the insurance. It went up huge. I don't think that Uber and Lyft cars have to do that anymore. So now I want to get an updated vehicle, a new van, but it costs like $2,000 to paint a vehicle. And there's only one company left, and that's us. There's two of us. Yellow cab now basically does hospital runs. So I just would like to have you folks consider, you know, not having to paint the vehicle. $2,000 bucks can go a long way with other things. It's just a, you know, when people get inside your vehicle, want to ride somewhere, what difference does the color of the outside of the van make anyway? But, and once again, Uber and Lyft, they have their cars all over the place. Jeeps, trucks, four-door sedans, this and that, all different colors. They don't have to do anything with the city of Iowa City as far as being considered to be that sort of thing. So anyway, could you please take that little portion out of the amendments for cab companies that it doesn't have to be the dedicated color for your company? Would appreciate that, and wait for your answer.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yes. Anyone else like to address any item that is not on our agenda? Seeing and hearing no one in person or online, we're gonna move on to our regular formal agenda. Nine A is gonna be vacate and easement on Baker's second subdivision. And this is a resolution to vacate a sewer easement and Barker's second subdivision. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And welcome our city manager, Jeff Ruin.
Okay, mayor and council. This is, this sewer easement dates back to 1965, in which it was originally recorded. However, since about 2000, the city has considered this easement to be abandoned, meaning we no longer utilize this sewer easement and foresee no future need for this easement. It currently stands in the way of some private redevelopment in this part of town. And in order to facilitate that redevelopment, we are recommending vacation of the easement.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff?
Is there anything that was actually ever installed in the easement area?
I'd ask Ron to verify that.
So this was the original alignment for sewer, with some upgrades and some trunk sewers. This area was abandoned, so no longer needed.
Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move. Second.
Moved by Saleh, second by Alter. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Nine B is approval of fiscal year 2025 annual action plan. Resolution adopting Iowa City's fiscal '25 annual action plan, which is a subpart of Iowa City's 2021 through 2025 consolidated plan. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, second by Bergus. And welcome Erica.
Hello, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. So our annual action plan outlines how we're going to spend our federal CDBG and home funds for the 2025 fiscal year. The action plan is a subpart of our five-year consolidated plan called City Steps 2025. We are in the fifth year of our five-year plan. Iowa City is an entitlement community, which means that we receive CDBG and home funds annually. Here are our allocations for FY '25, highlighted in the yellow. Our overall federal budget for home was cut this year, which resulted in a decrease of about 25% for Iowa City. So with both programs, we have about $150,000 less to work with next year compared to this year. And this table shows our historic funding over the past 30 years. This is unadjusted real dollars. We are not at our lowest funding level, but we are getting less than we received 30 years ago, 1994. Also want to point out the yellow line, which is our admin funds, which is a percentage of each grant that we can use for staff costs and overhead. That is just decreasing over time. And then this is the same information, just adjusted for inflation. Do you see the comparison of $1994 and $2024? And so this is Appendix B of the action plan. It shows our funding allocations for next year. This includes our new allocation, as well as program income, such as loan payments that we receive and any unused funds from prior years. So just to run through our projects, the public service funds go to DVIP and Neighborhood Centers. The awards came through the aid to agencies process, but are funded with CDBG funds. Neighborhood Centers was also funded to improve their pheasant ridge facility. Neighborhood Improvement Funds are a set aside. They'll go to a low-income area of the community. We don't have a project finalized, but in the past, we've done curb ramps to improve accessibility and park improvements. And we will partner with our Parks and Engineering Departments to complete this project. Our ongoing owner-occupied housing rehab program receives an annual set aside for both CDBG and home funds each year, so you see that. And then this next section, the other housing activities, is our competitive allocations. We have $300,000 for tenant-based rent assistance, or TBRA, which will be administered internally by the Housing Authority. We know there's a high need for rent assistance in our community. The waitlist at the Housing Authority is so long that HUD advised us to close it as we work through the current applications. We don't control how many vouchers we get from HUD, so this is an effort to more quickly assist those on the waitlist. TBRA is a complex program to administer under home. It has regulatory elements of the home program, as well as some similarities to the Housing Choice Voucher Program, in that tenants would pay 30% of their income towards rent, and then TBRA would subsidize the rest of it. Because it's home funding, through the city, TBRA can only be used in Iowa City rather than the full Housing Authority jurisdiction. And the preference for this project will be elderly and disabled households on the current Housing Choice Voucher waitlist. So likely under 30% of their median income. The next recommendation is rental rehab at Cross Park Place with Shelter House. This is a project that HCDC recommended, but staff is not recommending funding. The project scored high on our staff risk analysis because of the number of large projects with federal funding currently underway through Shelter House. We have specific timeliness deadlines through HUD, and when we have large amounts of funds tied up, we, it puts us at risk of not meeting our timeliness checkpoints, which can put us out of compliance with HUD. We also have concerns with the overall eligibility of the project, as proposed. We've run scenarios with both CDBG and home funding to see if one set of rules would work better with the project, but there are eligibility issues with both. Some of the concerns are related to the eligible costs. For example, a large portion of the request is for replacement of carpeting. And we got some additional guidance and determined that that is not an eligible expense because for rental rehab, because it's considered a maintenance cost rather than a rehab cost. Common area expenses, as opposed to work in individual units, are also ineligible. And then lastly, the project would have to meet our underwriting standards as submitted, and it does not. What we recommend is that Shelter House apply again in our next funding round and work with staff to figure out the best way for the funding to work with their needs. We also recommend that $85,000 that is allocated to Shelter House by HCDC go to the next highest scoring applicant, which was the Housing Fellowship. They are proposing to purchase two homes for larger-sized households and requested $420,000 total. And then we also have, working down the list, we also have set asides for Economic Development Program, where we provide technical assistance for small businesses, and then the administrative costs for both programs. So we are just ending our 30-day public comment period today at this meeting. HCDC made their recommendation at their June 13th meeting to approve the action plan. And then it's due to HUD on July 6th. You'll note that our fiscal year begins on the 1st, so our projects will be a little bit delayed as HUD approves the plan. But once that is approved, we can begin our projects. And then I just wanted to mention a couple other CDBG and home program updates. So we, as I mentioned, this is the fifth-year action plans, which means we're starting our next five-year consolidated plan, City Steps 2030. We are also updating our 2019 fair housing study. Both of those require public input. Those are planned to take place the week of July 30th, 31st, and August 1st. We'll send out flyers when that's scheduled. We're also dealing with a lot of HUD regulatory changes. HATMA is Housing Opportunities Through Modernization Act, that deals with how we verify incomes of all of our applicants. INSPIRE deals with the inspections. The Entire Home Program has a new final rule, which is 238 pages of new regulations for us to go through. Environmental reviews are changing a little bit. They've added radon requirements, so now in our owner-occupied rehab program, we have to test and mitigate for radon. Davis Bacon in Section 3 deal with labor standards, and Build America by America deals with sourcing materials for construction projects locally within the U.S. So a lot of staff time is being spent right now on learning the new regulations, interpreting them, putting them into our policies, and then helping our sub-receipients learn them as well. And then a little more positive, it's the 50th anniversary of CDBG this year in 2024. We have prepared a letter to send out to our congressional representatives about what the money means for Iowa City, how we could use more money and that type of thing. So that will go out in August. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Erica?
Erica, you mentioned that one Shelter House project that HCDC recommended approval of, but staff did not, and you explained why. And I think you said that ultimately, we could be out of compliance with HUD guidelines, HUD regulations. What happens if we're out of compliance?
If we miss the timeliness test on the first, the first year, it's just, it's like a written report that we provide. But as, as you go longer, it changes a little bit, so it's like more reporting you have to do to HUD. It puts us at risk for more monitoring visits from HUD, and then ultimately, you could get your funding sanctioned if it's a long period of time.
Okay. And you said part of this, just piggybacking off of, excuse me. You said there are already several or a few project, higher-dollar federal projects that Shelter House was having funded. Do you have the, the number of projects?
They just, they just are closing out an FY '22 HVAC project at the emergency shelter. So that was like $225,000. They're, they're finishing that one out. We've also allocated about $600,000 for other improvements at the emergency shelter through state CDBG CB funds, which the city is administering. Those are the big construction ones. They have some supportive service projects going on as well through ARPA and Home ARPA.
Okay. And then if it's okay, I just have one more question. And I think you explained this well. I just want to make sure that I understand. With the dollars that are going to the tenant-based rental assistance through the Housing Authority, there's no crossed wires because of that program currently? These, as you explained it, these are for the folks who are on the waitlist right now? Even though there are no vouchers, the, the program has been shut to kind of try to help people catch up, the program catch up? Is that correct? But there's no conflict, essentially?
No. The, the regulations for that program are really similar to the voucher program. It doesn't have all the benefits of the voucher program, but our intention is to pull people off the waitlist, fund them with TBRA, and then eventually they get a voucher. So it kind of just provides that assistance.
Okay, so they're not, okay. Thank you.
So as a point of clarification, are you wanting us to consider moving the Shelter House dollars over to Housing Fellowship?
Correct, yeah.
And then we would do that. I didn't actually look at the, at the...
Let's accept the...
At the Appendix B to see if it's actually still with the 85K for Shelter House, but we would have to do an amendment. Is that...
I, I think you mean if we accept the staff recommendation, that's it. They would deal with it, right? The vote here is to accept the, if we wanna move this, that means we accept the staff recommendation?
No. The recommendation is framed with the HCDC recommendation. So a yes vote, as stands right now, would support exactly what you see on the screen, which includes the $85,000 for the rental rehab for Shelter House. If you're inclined to move that back to the staff, recommendation would be to shift those funds downward to the rental acquisition line for the Housing Fellowship. You would need to amend to basically articulate that and articulate that change with Appendix B. So you would move to shift the $85,000 to where you'd ever like to see that go.
Can you also talk about the $19,000 here for the home award? What's the difference between the HCDC operation? Like, is this for the, it's not for the Shelter House, though, right?
The CHODO.
The 19?
Oh, that's where, there's like only two specific agencies, right, that are eligible for CHODO?
Right. The CHODO operating will go to Housing Fellowship. There are active CHODO. That's a community housing development organization. They have specific setup that allows, makes them eligible for those funds, and then they have to do projects along with it. So they have their acquisition project, and then they'll get $19,000 in operational funds to go with that.
An operational fund. And you mentioned something like, this is for like certain things, but maybe the Shelter House was talking. I didn't get that. They was proposing some kind of like carpeting king or something like. Can you just like talk more about that?
Right. So the, the proposal... Right, so the proposal is rental rehab project for Cross Park Place. Some of the costs are ineligible in both funding sources. For example, under home, the common areas are not eligible. You can only do rental rehab in the units. So some of the things they wanted to do were like the front desk area. And then also, the, under CDBG, the carpet replacement that they want to do would be considered maintenance, and it's not an eligible cost under rental rehab.
Sure.
Have you communicated the concerns to Shelter House? And was there kind of a response that you could share with us?
We haven't, we haven't gone in-depth about the, some of the eligibility. Some of the things early on were communicated to them, like the pro forma. But the eligibility costs were kind of recent guidance that we got.
And also, I believe like the staff have experience, and sometimes commissioner don't like necessarily know the details. Like, have you highlighted this to the commissioner that, oh, their application have only this certain part is not eligible at all? So because this is really, the organization might not also understand the commissioner, but the staff do. Have you done that? Have you communicated?
Yeah, we do a staff report for all the applications for the commission. Not all the information was available at the time we did our allocation in March, but we do staff reports for all of them. In hindsight, we probably would have removed this application from eligibility and not given it to the commission had we known all the, all the information that we have now.
I see.
And just to clarify, I think what you're getting at is a little bit of the timing, because July, we have to approve this before July 1. Is that correct?
It's due July 6.
July 6. And we won't meet again until July 19 or 16? Yeah, so, all right. Any other questions? We'll have time for, for discussion, but yeah. Any other questions? All right, great. We're going to move on to council. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. See anyone in person or online, council discussion?
Seems as if the commission had had the information, they would have acted differently, and there's a timeliness constraint here. So I think the order of operations that I'm comfortable with is let's make an amendment and move forward.
As am I. I agree too, because like complying is really important. So we want to keep receiving those kind of fund to the city, so can, yeah, I agree. We can amendment.
Did I hear a motion for amendment?
I would move that we amend what we're looking at here, moving the $85,327 from rental rehab at Shelter House to...
I was second to that.
To the Housing Trust Fund?
Housing Trust Fund, yeah.
Or I mean, the Housing Fellowship.
Housing Fellowship.
Housing Fellowship, my apologies.
Wait, is it?
Housing Fellowship.
Housing Fellowship?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Housing Fellowship.
I wrote down Housing Authority.
No, no, housing. And when you was talking about the voucher, you confused me, and I said...
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize.
So moved by Mo?
Second.
Second by Sala. All right, continued discussion by council?
I think this is really good opportunity. I understand that, like, also rental rehab is really important. Unfortunately, at this time, there is some like noncompliance on it, but also like moving this to the Housing Fellowship and get like permanent affordability of like housing, that's kind of thing that we want to do. Yes, we can like help people pay rent and for a certain time, but when we have stable housing forever, that is in the goal of the city. Yeah, I will be voting yes for this.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes. Oh, wait a minute. Hilarious. All right, it was Dunn that said yes and not me. All right, motion passes seven to zero. So that was for the amendment.
Okay.
So now we're going to take roll call for the, for the entire, with the amendment.
Oh, yeah, sometimes that's confusing, yeah.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero, and Teague did not respond for Dunn. For Dunn, I don't know why I did that. All right.
Much appreciated, Mayor.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we are on to nine C, fiscal year '25 aid to agencies. Resolution allocating human services aid to agencies funded for fiscal year 2025, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And we do have Mayor Pro Tim Sala recruiting herself. And can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second.
Burgess?
All right, and welcome again.
Hello, so this is for aid to agency funding. It's ongoing operational funding for local nonprofit agencies. We have two different funding groups. Our legacy agency is the bulk of the funding. You're seeing our allocations here. It's year two of a two-year funding cycle, so we didn't go through our whole application process this year. This is based on the council-approved budget for FY '25, and we prorated all of the FY ' '24 awards for FY '25. Everyone got a slight increase of this group. So that's all I have for that one. I did want to talk a little bit about our aid to agency subcommittee through HCDC. Members were appointed by the commission in January 2023 and met throughout the rest of 2023. They worked closely with representation from the Agency Impact, which is a group of agency representatives that receive funding from the city. They really focused their work on the application process and then presented their recommendations at our April meeting through HCDC. So right now, our next steps, we're working with the United Way Group. It's City of Iowa City, City of Corroville, Johnson County, and United Way, and potentially North Liberty, to work those recommendations into the joint funding application where the, where we take our legacy applications. And so we're hoping that we'll be ready for the application that opens September 1st, which would be FY '26 awards. So just a little update on that, may hear more about it. And then this is our emerging aid to agency allocation that were recommended by HCDC. We had, we had nine applications, applications from nine agencies requesting $124,500. HCDC allocated $37,000 to six agencies, as you see here. The funding for this one is $5,000 to $15,000. Discussion from the commission surrounded what services to prioritize, whether the agencies are brand-new or have been established, past funding to these agencies, and other funding revenues that the agencies received.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes, please come up, state your name and the city you're from. You don't have to sign in again. And you have up to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Estima Ali. My question is, how do I apply for getting a fund for opening an Arabic language institute in Iowa City? Because I applied last time and I, I, I got nothing. Is there a certain way that I can follow to get the fund or earlier as I can or by time? I need more details about this, please.
Yep. And what we'll do is connect staff with you. Yep, yep, thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address this topic? See anyone in person or online, council discussion?
One item in our, sorry to cross streams here, but our pending work session topics is review of city grant programs, specifically aid to agency. And I'm curious, the timing of how that aligns with this discussion. I don't want to dive into that work session discussion now. But...
I guess the next funding, you know, we would, I think we're going to have the, that discussion prior to the next funding round.
Right, we can't do it.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not against this recommendation. I'm just sort of aligning timing of when the appropriate time to have conversations about this, because this has already been worked through the appropriate processes. It's out of no belief that there's been anything wrong happening here, just...
Yes, yes. So we will have that discussion. Yes. Any other discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. And will someone...
Is it possible just to make comment in terms of timing that, Erica, is it?
We shouldn't.
Okay, never mind. I was just going to say wasn't, isn't...
We're done with that one.
We're done, we're totally done. Okay, I just wanted to ask a timing question when it got before.
Yeah, so if someone could get Mayor Pro Tim, but yes.
Okay. No, that's fine, that's fine. On the right, on the left. That makes sense.
Yes, all right. We're on to item number 10, which is council appointments. 10A is Historic Preservation Commission College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. There is one male requirement for this one, and there are two applicants.
For College Street, I'd like to recommend Kevin Burford.
I'd support that.
Yep.
Yep, so I hear majority for Kevin Burford. Could I get a motion for Kevin to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission, College Street?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmson.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 10B, Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment through June 30, 2027. And there is only, there is a male, there's a gender requirement, there is one male applicant. And I can support him, I don't know what people think.
Yeah. Ryan Russell, yeah.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve Ryan Russell to the Historic Preservation, East College Street?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sala, seconded by Burgess. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to announcements of vacancies new, item number 11A. Board of Appeals, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2028. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, December 31, 2024, plus a three-year term upon appointment through December 31, 2027. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 30, 2024. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Sala.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to announcements of vacancies previous, 12A. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 9, 2024. Airport zoning board of adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five, a five-year term. Airport zoning commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled, and we are at item number 13, City Council Information.
The Paratransit Advisory Committee met, sorry, previous meeting to this one, so it was the 28th of May. They had the electric bus, we got to look at it for, for seats. And Tom Braise has retired, and Don Olim is the new Transportation Fleet Director.
Well, I want to say that this past weekend was power-packed with a lot of stuff.
Yes.
So we had Juneteenth celebration on Friday, we had Pride celebration on Sunday, and then there was the, the... Oh, Saturday, and then I'm jumping over to Sunday with the Dream City, and the South District had a wonderful event all day Sunday, so that was great to see. There are still some Juneteenth events happening, as was mentioned earlier, so I invite you all to go to the website to see that this upcoming weekend. It has been a hit in Iowa City, and that is the block party, so I encourage people to come out and enjoy that.
I just want to also say it was, I mean, it was tremendous, and thank you to everyone who either volunteered or staffed up during it. It took a lot of people to make it run smoothly, and it was much appreciated.
Yes, absolutely. All right, we're going to move on to item number 14, reports on items from city staff. City manager's office.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, our city attorney's office.
Nothing to report, thank you.
All right, and welcome again to council meeting. And you're, you came on a good night.
Right?
Right. And our city clerk's office. We usually have Ashley come to keep our nights closing earlier, but...
Seemed to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, we're at item number 15. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Burgess?
Second.
Alter?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.